Okay, we are going to jump over the second item and go to approval of payroll claims. Um, how do you want to do this, Steve?
Same as always.
Okay.
Approval claims presented in amounts, as long as they all match.
Okay, well, we're going to have to make sure that's. You got a second? You got a second, okay. And I will read the claims. Tableau here. Uh, payroll claims, the amount of two hundred eleven thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and six cents. Is that right? And approval of early claims, an amount of a hundred five thousand, eight oh eight seventeen. That matches. And, uh, Bentonix claims, an amount of thirty-five hundred, thirty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Is that right? Maybe a little.
Thirty-three thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
No, it is what it is, isn't it?
Yep.
Okay, minus a little. Thirty-three, fifty-one, fourteen is two of them, plus a. Okay, then we've got, then we have, no, we have got, we have, uh, real and surtax in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Right.
On the will, will tax? Treasure for what? Seven thousand, seven ninety-six, fifty-three, line one. Then line seven is forty-two thousand, forty-eight, forty-eight?
There's two months, April and May, two different months.
Makes sense.
It looks like Gilmore's on there twice, Gilmore's on there twice.
Three down.
And then this one, okay, and then we've got a real and surtax for May, was sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents. And, uh, local income tax PSAP, thirty-four thousand, four hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's our ninety-nine dollars.
Let me freeze, in the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And certified shares of local income tax, were three hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. And like on this, all these are distributions of money, so like on this one, we just, I just read there, it's a lot of money. But it goes to every township trustee and each of the towns and all that, so it's a little bit to light it up each, to each entity in the county. And now we're down to the local income tax edit. Disbursement, which is fifty-seven thousand, three forty-eight, seventy-two. And then we have education plate fees. On this one, here. Is it stopped for one of these other ones? The hundred and thirty-five dollar one there, maybe it's hundred, yeah, okay, this is our word. Okay. County general claim, the amount of a hundred and thirty-five dollars. And education plate fees distribution. To, huh. Why, why does Swim Lakes not get part of that? Is there a reason? We've got Rossville, Carroll, and Delphi out here.
Because it tells us who this, when we get that money, it tells us who it goes to. So evidently, Swim Lakes didn't have it.
Okay. It's hard to, when you buy, if I buy a plate and I'm in Carroll, Blue Corporation, it goes to Carroll, right? Is that how it works?
I would assume so, yes.
Anyways, five hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents.
It's not much.
Some, some of those have been, that's from two thousand sixteen up to date. And we found some that had not been distributed, so.
Now, they're not completed on signing, I haven't signed any of them, but we can have a motion and a second, pending that we went through all those. All in favor of approval of those claims, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And now we're ready for prosecutor Nick McQueen on this, Nick. Nick, thought out here, maybe he'll come down after a little while.
I disagree with that.
On the ball, Steve. And, uh, we'll jump on ahead then to, uh, environmental health specialist Angie Brown, Lower Lake Corporations, Area Plan Executive Director Cameron E. Yates. If you, either one or both of you'd like to come to the podium, we'd like to hear from you. This is, I think, predicated by, Steve had some questions at the last meeting concerning, uh, the process on cleaning up, uh, problem classes. And since it falls to, from the one of you, it's on to the other one of you, why we should, well, let's just have a time and talk about it, so. Thank you for coming in.
The last letter I sent these people was on April twenty-seventh.
Now, we're talking about just one specific place up here. Is that one you asked about?
I think it is one on top of the hill. Whatever you're getting.
Yeah.
Can you give us the address?
One oh seven, four eight North Lower Lake Shore Drive, Monticello. That's where it's located.
What was the letter? April what?
April twenty-seventh was the last one I sent.
And I sent one Thursday, July sixteenth, twenty.
But we get no response from anybody.
I've knocked on the doors several times. You can see movement, but nobody came to the door. So there, there was a dogger at one time, but he wasn't there last Tuesday when I went there. I seen people move around and knocked on the door again. Sit out in the yard, right across the street, waiting, so. They, they know that I've been there, approached him several times, and I know that she's sent him several letters. And this is, this is just one of several throughout the county, and I'll be really blunt with you. It's, it's overwhelming because it's, it's an all four count, or corner of the county. And I'm ready to tackle it with the, the ordinance we have. If I have the backing of the commissioners, you know, it's a, it's a process. I mean, there's letters that go out and all that, but the way I've always heard it was, well, you know, we've always kind of just send letters and hope that they, they, uh, acted on it well. You know, you only send so many letters, and that's not fair to the people that live across the street that have to look out their windows at all. And people that want to buy a house in this county, don't go to another county, they don't want to look at it either, so. If I have your guys' backing, I will, I will go to work on it. And I'll send them letters if they don't act, and, you know, but the, I think it's a team effort between myself, Angie, and the commissioners, and the area plan commissioners, all of us. Because I know it's going to go to the courts, it has to go to the courts for, for a certain part of it. And I was told, well, that's, you know, it's, it's jammed up in the court system. I, I get that as well, but at the end of the day, it's been going on too long, it's time to get the county cleaned up. Because I've talked to a lot of people, would love to come to Carroll County, but that property that they looked at, I just don't want to look at that out my window, is what they told me. And that's not, not what we want, and I think we can get it, I think we can get it right, so.
It seems like the process just takes too long. You send letters, you have to send another letter, you have to send another letter, and then by that time, you gotta get somebody else involved, and they send letters.
It does take a long time. But the thing is, I was out there last week, and there was a gentleman outside, and I went up and talked to him, and he literally walked back in the house. He wouldn't acknowledge I was even there, he just walked away from me. I mean, I, it's, it is a process, it's not going to happen overnight. And everybody thinks that if they call in, that by tomorrow it's going to be like that. But that it isn't realistic, so.
And that's another thing I got is, people say, well, I want to know who called, I want to know who called, and from today forward, if they don't want to come in and do the paperwork, fill out an official piece of paperwork, that's an official complaint, I, I don't have time with myself and Gloria to go out and, and do fifteen to twenty of my week. Because I'm, I'm trying, I'm going out looking at them, and I'm talking to the people, because I think that's fair, and that's my job. But at the end of the day, if they don't want to do an official complaint and get the process rolling, I'm basically going out there and spinning my wheels. So I, I hope you guys agree with that, because I, I could go out and look at twenty of this week. But if they don't want to do an official complaint and do the paperwork to get, and it's a lot of it because they don't want to make their neighbors mad. And I get that.
Well, I think that will have to come from your board, because we don't control you, we have to take that to your board with the piece of paper that they filled out.
We, we have the paper, but, and I encourage a lot, every one of them, come in and fill out the paperwork, because that's what's needed, and they don't want to do that.
Well, if they don't want to do it, then.
Well, part of the problem is.
But you need to talk to your board about it.
Then they're going to call in and say, we're not doing anything about it, and that's, that's not true, because I've been out there looking at it, so.
But if you've got a neighbor that's afraid of them, I'm not going to do that to them. So I'm not going to say, hey, your neighbor was the one that called. But if it goes to court, that will be, that will become.
So they're going to find out either way.
Yes, and a lot of it is retaliation. They don't want their neighbors to get mad, and they don't want to be, uh, have a, a neighbor dispute. So it's not that we don't go out and look at them, because we've looked at, I've looked at several things, we've, we've been to several of them. So it's a matter of, we'll have to start doing the, you know, if you really want to act on this, we'll, we'll do our part as well. And it has to be an official complaint, and then that way we have documentation that we were there, what time we were there. And if it goes to the courts, then we'll have everything there, but a lot of them just call in and say, well, you know, I don't really want to do that, but, you know, I, I understand that part, but.
So if that changed, what else do you think we need to change in the process for later?
Somehow, the mayor, if he, um, has a problem in Delphi, he just he sent his crew out to take care of it, and it gets done a lot quicker, like mowing, for instance. But I, I also think there's a difference between a crew of five or six of his guys going out for, for me sending one person out to do it. And, you know, I'm having trouble hiring people to do cleanup on some of these properties, because on a lot of the properties that need to be cleaned up, people are scared, they, they really are. And they're, they're hard to deal with. And somebody getting paid to do that job, they know they don't have to do that, and they go out there and if they have confrontation, they walk away. They're not going to stand there and argue with the guy, or they're not going to start hauling their stuff off if the guy's going to stand there and try to fight them. That's, that's what we get into, generally. And the, the only alternative is take a detective or, or a police officer out, but they're not going to want to stand there all day while a property gets cleaned up, so. I don't know what the option is, I don't know what the best scenario is for this. I've, I've been, I've been saying this for years now, is that I don't know how to get some of these properties taken care of, because these people are not nice people.
It's apparently a, it's, you can send them the first fence, second fence, third fence, and that's each one comes with a different fine. So I don't know, and I'm going to bring this up in my board meeting on Tuesday as well, but, you know, we send a letter, they don't act on it, we go to work. It's one of those where it shouldn't take six months to clean it up. And that's easier said than done, I get it. But I'm willing, as the administrator for area plan, to, to work on it if, if we get the, I brought it up in previous meetings, and I said, well, it's just, it's too long a process, so everything's kind of set still, what's, I'm, I'm okay with going to work on it, I mean, because I don't like looking at them either.
But it makes us look bad, because these things don't, don't happen as quickly as everybody, I mean, I get, I get threats all the time from people saying, well, I'm going to go above your head. Well, please go above my head, because I don't know who else can do it, so if you have a better idea, I'm open for it, so.
Regardless of all of our experts, but we're.
Yeah, Angie, we've talked about that place going down C and T Beach.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before you go around on that.
Right.
And there, and there are several throughout the county, there is.
There is.
See, as, as far as mowing goes, the towns or trustees can take care of that.
Yeah, but you can't mow this, because there's so much stuff on it, but.
But there is a process, we, what we, the trustees have to go through to be able to do that, which is the letters and then we need to assess, put a assessment on the taxes.
So what's the surrounding counties doing in this situation, if you could circle them down?
I, I spoke with the city of Lafayette, just to kind of see what they had, and Tipton County, Sally, I sent her an email, but it was during all the COVID stuff. And we've had, we're still trying to get caught up with it, but they are kind of the same process, except for they're a little bit more, it's not as long.
Right, they have enforcement for the people out there.
Correct. Yeah, well, they, they have several divisions, I mean, they have an area plan, and then within that area plan, they have this, I mean, they have thirty people to work with, we have two.
They have more points to do.
So, yeah, they have a lot more manpower, but it's not something that can't be done, the current ordinance has the language for it. It's a matter of, uh, shorten it down and saying, look, if you don't want to clean it up, here's what we're going to do, and we're done with it. They've done negotiation with it, if we don't stay in their ground, then we're going to chase them out. Like I said, I, I'm willing to send them letters, if they don't want to act on it, let's, let's handle it. Got one that's expired right now, that we're getting ready to work on, for a letter I sent.
I just think we need to revisit the ordinance and have, have Ted make it stronger again.
I think it's written well, I think it's just a part of, well, once it's, we get rid of the enforcement part, shorten that down to where it's.
Okay, and they're, they're bringing, say that again, Angie.
I just think we need to revisit the ordinance and have.
And he's revisiting it right now.
Yeah.
You got the O two, O three?
Carroll County. This is the official.
Okay, now, while, while we have ordinances in hand, I, I would like to just specifically come in on one settlement, that I have turned in for you, and you just follow through, and I am not pointing fingers at anybody saying, you're not getting it done or anything, because I know that there's a long process, and that's what I'm trying to figure out here, is what, what the process all is, and what we need to do to help them. Okay, we have the guy in Cutler who's running a junkyard right in town, a little bitty town lot. And I counted thirteen cars when I came in this morning on that lot. You can't get hardly lawnmower on the lot now beside the car. So what is the process? I know you said, when you went out.
His letter expired, uh, the nineteenth, which would be what?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
So, uh, I guess that's good, that falls into a perfect time to discuss it for this morning. So now, uh, we can send him another letter with the fine, we can start the fifty-dollar fine, does the fine need to go through the court system? Does it need to go through, um, yeah, like I said, he just expired yesterday with the first letter that has been sent to him. And there's been other agencies out there as well, so.
Okay, junkyards are generally land use issues, which comes under the area plan commission.
Correct.
I don't think junkyard is specifically mentioned, I mean, if it's a land use issue, you need to use the plan commission.
If it, if it doesn't have a registration on it, it's considered junk vehicle.
I mean, I, I'd have to refer to the, um, the unified zoning ordinance. Unified zoning ordinance would, would, if it meets the definition of a junkyard.
Well, I'm sure it's not an equal junkyard where the he's charged some of the tax and all that.
Whatever your plan, uh, is unified zoning ordinance. If the unified zoning ordinance means this to be a, uh, a junkyard, an operate, a de facto, there's de jure, de facto, de facto is, if it's in fact, basically a junkyard, as there was one in Cook County on seven hundred north. It was a big one for a long time. The, uh, area plan commission, um, got permission from the commissioners to go to court, and that thing was eventually.
How long did it take, Ted?
Oh. Took over a year, when I first came home. Took about over a year.
Well, that was, it was back in two thousand and six, or something like that, I couldn't remember. But anyway, the, uh, I mean, they did go to the court eventually. So you don't get into the fines until you go to court. So, uh, that, that issue, at least you look at in terms of unified zoning, so I don't, I don't have a copy of that here. It's not, it's not in, I don't think it's in the county code.
That's what me and you were kind of working on before all the tidbits started.
Yeah, right, it needs to be codified. I mean, it was going to be revised, and then it was going to be codified, going to be revised, but it never got revised. So that, that's what, what you do with, if, if it meets the definition of a junkyard.
Okay, what if it doesn't meet the definition of a junkyard, because just thirteen cars sitting in the yard.
Well, they're not, they're not going to be registered, though. Any junk vehicle that is not registered with current state registration.
Cannot be simply operated and driven.
I don't think any of them can be operated, due to the law.
It's not carried on the most recent tax records, records of county assessor's office. So there's, there's three different breakdowns. The one I looked at in Cutler, that, that all this falls, like, it's, it may any criteria.
Junk and inoperable vehicles are usually handled through the police department. They can, they can, uh, they have the right to call the, uh, towing service and get them home away eventually, you know. So junk vehicles come under a, in Indiana, the whole scheme of the Indiana statutes. And the cities and towns are used to doing this. The counties have the same authority as the cities and towns. So it's a matter of resources of the sheriff department in, in going out and taking, so that's, that's another set of statutes, it's not under the general nuisance.
So they go out and put a sticker on them?
They, they tag them in some way.
They give them a forty-eight hour tag?
Yeah.
Would have to be moved or.
Yeah, foreplayed, and I think they do that a few times before it'll be called in to have someone remove it. And that's all part of the Indiana code. Can't just, unless it's causing immediate danger, you can't just have a tow to your, if it's on a roadway, this would be a little bit, they can take tags, if there's thirteen of them, they can tag thirteen of them.
These, you see, they, they are encroaching on the roadway, I think some of them sit on the right of way.
I would think some of them are on the county right of way, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the different, those that, we, uh, if they're on the, on the road, and the highway engineer can verify that, they can be
They would be needed.
Brought in to, well, actually, I would, I would give them due process, because anytime you do it without due process, you know, you're, uh, you're inviting a lawsuit. It's kind of like landlords and tenants, when they give their people stuff, and they have it on the proper process, their landlords and tenants can wind up buying people new house owners. So you want to do the same with cars, so you want to identify and have your witness, who would be your county highway engineer, determine that, here's, here's a picture of vehicles that are on the county right of way. The commissioners can give a notice, that person can be, uh, given an opportunity to come to court with the commissioners. The highway superintendent says, these vehicles are on the road. If they have contrary evidence, they say no, they aren't, the commissioners can order it removed without having to go through court. Now, if you want to collect money, you do eventually have to go through the court, but if you want to get rid of the problem, my opinion, something like that, I would, I would just get rid of the problem and move on to the next one. If they're actually approaching, the ones that are encroachments are actually the easiest, if you can approve that they are being approached.
So I will give it the county highway and the state sheriff's department about it.
See, I don't think that'd be very difficult, because those streets are dedicated streets in, in Cutler, like they are in a lot of of unincorporated areas. And they're very defined as to the width of the road, they're not a street where you own to the center, you know, like the county road, where you're over the center of the road. They, they're, they are, they belong to the county, those streets do.
Paul has a, a system that, that says how much right of way we have on every county road.
Yeah.
He's actually the only one that has that system, so he would know if it, you know, if it's three feet off the road, because every road's different, we get a lot of calls on none as well. It works by right of way. It's like In-Dot, In-Dot has a different right of way for every road. So I will reach out to Paul. And the ones that's on the property, that will be a separate, like he said, the ones on the road would be a little bit easier. But I'll reach out to, uh, the sheriff's department as well for the ones that's.
Yeah, and, you know, the sheriff can do the VIN check, you know, and all that.
Do the what, yes?
The identification.
All right.
Oh, the running VIN check.
Because you also have to notify, and I want to show this to you in the, in the, in the county code, you have to notify anybody with a substantial interest in the property. Now, that may not be the person that's, uh, necessarily the person that's owning, owning the property. I mean, it may be, there may be a bank that's got a lien on it. That's why you, or the sheriff gives them all the details. The same is true of the real estate. If there's a condition of real estate that is, uh, violates your general nuisance area, then you have to notify, and it's in our code, uh, the front page.
Some of the people got a lien on their house for a long time.
You have to notify the.
You notify the bank, say, hey, you're.
The bank sometimes is the one that is the solution to the problem, and, and where is the person.
Because I'll have it cleaned up and add it to their monthly bill.
Right, right.
By giving written notice to all persons holding a substantial interest on this property upon which such nuisance exists, causing maintenance, maintenance.
Yes, I, I, and I think, I'm pretty sure the health department's been doing this, because we can have that on, uh, the, even for county, this, in the provision. They get a title check, make sure there's no mortgage on it before we go to send the notices, because you got to also send the notice to the bank.
I actually have a resident bring me in, thirteen registration numbers. I sent a letter to a county resident, and asked her to please get these cleaned up, and, you know, I've had several complaints, and they brought thirteen registrations. So you'll get that as well, there's some people that keep them registered. That makes it a little bit tricky. I don't think that's going to be a common scenario, but I was, I was about to talk about that. That, that's something that can happen as well, and then you got to change your course of. I'm, I'm willing to go to work on it once we, I'll, like I said, I'm going to bring it up again in my meeting Tuesday with the board. The language is here, I just, personally, I think we need to shorten it up, and I know there's a process with the courts and all that, and doing it right. But there's a lot of them in the county that need to be checked.
To me, uh, one, one thing I, I have to remind myself is that to those people that are there, this is a treasure to them.
Sure, it is.
This is, this is their assets, this is, this means something to them. I mean, we can drive by and say, we got a pile of junk, boy, I'll haul all that off, but to them
Right.
It's a whole different thing, and. And, and I'm sure though, as is the case of the guy at Keller there, I think you may very well be dealing with somebody who's violating on the whole thing. Because you, to him, you're stealing his property.
Right.
And infringing on his freedom and like that to, where, whereas I see it as he's infringing on everybody else around him's freedom to have a peaceable place and not have raccoons running everywhere out of junk vehicles and all that kind of stuff, so.
There's a misconception of it's my property, I can do what I want with it. And that's true to an extent. It is your property, but when it affects your neighboring properties and the value of their properties, then that, that rule doesn't hold true. And that's actually in the Indiana code, there's a language trying to insinuate that. But it, and I get it, and I'm not trying to make, make myself look like the bad guy, but at, at the end of the day, if someone wants to buy a property next to, to this, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going somewhere else and I don't think that's fair. It is their property and they have the right to do a lot of things with the property until it affects the neighbor, neighboring properties.
Have you sent letters to the banks if they have liens on the?
I had to send a letter to the bank in New York for one down the road here, but yeah, so, I mean, it, it'll show, not for this one, no. But you do, you have to do your research on it and send it to everybody.
It takes more time.
It does, but I mean, it'll tell you on, on beacon, other documents, if there are lien holders or something like that. So there's, there's research involved, but that, that's kind of part of the process. I would like to get it shortened down to where here's your letter. If you don't, uh, put some effort into it, then we're, we're.
Mike, excuse me, go ahead, Steve.
What can you do about that? And can we shorten that up?
Research.
Well, whatever, make it go quicker.
I don't know if there's anything worth it in, in this. That law applies whether you, when you're taking in property. The idea of, uh, you know, the next step, step, I mean, the county's nuisance, it depends on the nature of the nuisance and, uh, the county relies on its, uh, area plan and health department to enforce these. And some of them naturally fall within their jurisdiction to do. The other general nuisances, uh, and the sheriff is also making do this too, which is, is not really the use of law enforcement, in my opinion. I don't think that's the best recommended thing is to have your, your law enforcement to go to enforcement. Although in a small town, it's not uncommon. But anyway, the next, the, the other thing to, to streamline and to, uh, uninvolved courts would be to have, have code enforcement officers and that, that's more money. Code enforcement officer and a ordinance violations bureau, which is where people pay their penalties directly to the court's offices instead of having to go through the court. Because all of these, uh, uh, ordinances that are in the code, they have penalty provisions, but, um, and they have, they have recommended penalties. But if the person denies the violation and goes to court and you're trying to collect it, the, the judges are wanting to actually assess the amount. There are parameters that they, they work within and, and they, uh, they set, they set the penalties and not necessarily remove the government, so. But, uh, code enforcement officer and ordinance violations bureau, that's more money. And I, I, it's been, been a while, it's probably been a year and a half. I talked to the clerk at that time and she had, uh, she had space on Odyssey, which is the court computer system, to do ordinance violation in Carroll County, using the clerk's office and the, uh, we can have the ordinance violations bureau. You have a schedule of penalties that are usually lesser than what are in the code. That encourages people to come in and pay and get in an order. There is a court of term, so like, uh, because if they, if they deny or don't pay it in the clerk's office, then you're still, you still gotta go. But if you make it, uh, so they're, they're used to coming in for the clerk's office to pay it. And there's, there's a uniform schedule. That's the schedule they, they, the clerk follows and they can't mediate somehow. Now, if you go onto court, then it can be, the penalties can be greater, but usually it works out. But then a court office, they can add it on to the court, they violate it, so. As far as shortening this, I don't think people shorten this clearly. I mean, uh, you still gotta view the, uh, occasion and, uh, you still gotta notify the person who's substantial interest in the property and, uh, then, in, in this case, your next step is you're given the right to go on, uh, the county's given the right to go on and clean it up. That's, so that's a policy decision, whether you want that to be done or do you want this to go into court at that point and, uh, let's court find the person.
See, from our layman standpoint, we just want it cleaned up, so, and, and as quickly as possible.
So the quickest part, uh, quickest, well, it's like the, it's like the tall, tall grass weeds in, in the cities and towns, which are a constant problem. They just send town employees in and bowl it, then they put, we send them bill, then it's, there's a mowing lien.
So mowing lien.
Yeah, mowing lien, yeah. And, uh, the auto, autos, you know, the, the sheriff has the, this statute that allows the police to, you know, have them clear the lane and then the salvage guy, you know, gets paid and so forth, so. Going in and doing it yourself, if you got the, if you got the person able to do it, is the quickest way to get it done.
Okay, you brought up, Cameron, excuse me, the point of you're willing to pull up your bright yellow sleeves and go to, Eric, uh, if you have the backing of the commissioners. I, I think you definitely do consider any question from either of you though, just how to, just how to do it the right way, yeah. I don't know. I, I just know that it seems like that you and the health department are loaded down with things you have to do to get it cleaned up as far as, you know, problem of the process. Seems like all the weight, all the work, all the trouble is all on our, on our, our side compared to the people who want to just sit there and say, well, I'm not gonna do it. They got the easy side of it. And as Dan's pointed out, there's often a safety part of this whole thing.
Today, Dan.
I'm sure I'm not as intimidating as.
I, and I told her she can call me on it and I went to several with them. So that's not something we want to ever happen, someone to approach her by the way. So I don't have a problem going out there on somebody that would just, but ninety-nine percent of them say, I'll just pick it up, my property, do it all. You'll get some of this, yeah.
So what's the, so is it thirty days after each letter?
I, it's kind of discretion of the, the administrator and I usually give them thirty days. I think that's better, it's plenty of time if they gotta get something arranged. And like the one yesterday, that expired yesterday, that was a thirty day notice.
So after that, you, you send a second notice, is that another thirty days?
That's, that's a discretion of the.
Discretion of you. So maybe after the first notice, you don't do it, you had thirty days, a second notice.
Yeah, I don't usually do thirty days, thirty days, thirty days.
Right, so like ten to fifteen days.
But that's, you know, it's a process. So that's, at the end of that process, you know, there's a lot to it, so. On top of day-to-day operations in here, I, I mean, they might sit for a few days before I can get back to it, because I'm trying to keep up with what's going on down there. Like I said, I'll, I'll work on it.
Well, the one I brought up in Cutler, the one he brought up at the lake, are different from the standpoint of, I don't know, does that one encroach on the highway?
It does not. But it's, any encroach is on the, the ordinance, though, I have several.
The only thing I could do there is, is, uh, oil leaks or something out of vehicles that affects the housing building.
Yeah, and they have a couple campers there now that are also nonplated. Uh, there's stuff behind the house. I have one eleven fifty that I've approached and they came into my office and it wasn't a good conversation. And I brought that one up to my board and I'm gonna revisit that one next Tuesday. So they're, they're everywhere. And I get the people's frustrations that live next to them, because I wouldn't want to look at either.
And we have two houses in Camden that need to be torn down. I was hopeful to have estimates on both of those today and, uh, they didn't follow through on me, so I'm still trying to get people to give me quotes on what that's going to cost. And I know this was, you said that, um, Camden had their own system, but Camden claims that.
They say they fall under our ordinance.
And it falls back to the commissioners, because they're giving the house up for tax.
Ann Bridge is gonna look into some fund that Camden could establish for these circumstances. I don't know if she ever.
That's a building fund.
Yes, and I don't know, that was back in January, I don't know where they're at with it.
Well, they missed like the three meetings, so they're probably not very far.
Right.
And then also the, uh, people that are giving me the estimates wanted to know if they could tear down the building and fill it in a, if there's a basement in that house, if they can fill it in and cover it or if it all has to be removed. So I called Indianapolis, I, uh, we had the, one, one guy that tore down a house in Camden that got no permits whatsoever. He just, I think, they hitched on fire.
Yeah, he bought it after one part.
And, uh, so I called because I said, you know, how they have to know asbestos. Basically what I was told was, well, it's a done deal, there's nothing we can do about it now. So whatever you guys want to do, go ahead.
We don't have a demolition permit. IDEN does. You can't just go burn shingles.
But that's what IDEN told me. It's already done, there's nothing we can check now, so let it go. So my question is, the two houses in Camden that I'm dealing with right now, that both need to be torn down, if they then repress the situation more than.
I think one's occupied now. The one on Main Street, the other one's in town, behind the school.
There's, there's one that I put, the, the one on Main Street.
It's not occupied.
Has signs on it that says condemned by the health department. And the other one had a tree go through it and there's no roof on it at all.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's the one that I spoke with.
No way anybody's looking in it, but the guy claims he wants to rebuild it and there used to be somebody in there with a tree. And did you check to see if the taxes have been paid? They had a huge building, building right behind it.
It's a great big.
Star Wars.
Yeah, it's a whole bar material, I'm not sure what would we classify the building as. So I don't believe it's a level structure, but I've worked with County Camden on that one in Jill, so.
Taxes have been paid on that one, the other one they have not.
This is an ongoing issue with this, this, it's also, it's been addressed again. And I spoke to Camden, I talked to Mark Schott Friday about it, Thursday, so that one's an ongoing one as well.
But the one on Main Street, Town Camden is not going to do anything about because, yes, taxes are unpaid, water lanes are unpaid, and you guys are gonna get that one back.
They moved it forward, I believe.
And that's, that's been a hard thing for years. That house has been in that condition when I first started.
They used to live in that house. They used to live in that house the way it was.
I wonder if, uh, if that's been through a tax sale before.
It's been through several tax sales.
Several tax sales.
Yes.
So we could take title to it.
We will take title, no one wants it. But the problem is that Camden won't, um, relieve the.
The lien, the sewer lanes and water.
They got like eight thousand dollars or something like that.
That's why nobody wants, has interest in it.
Right.
I mean, they would like it, but they can't get past.
The issue there is is that house has its own well, it's not hooked to the city water.
But the sewer.
But the sewer was, since they're trying to collect enter.
I don't think they'd have such a hard time getting rid of it if those lanes would be, wanna, you know, be lowered or.
They don't want to pay to have the house torn down and also pay the liens on it. They want, they will pay the one or the other, but they don't want to pay the other.
Well, I know we have a gentleman who works for a highway that we can fill in his hole with. You'd have what, we're quantity filling, so we're gonna put the highway in there on a Saturday, do, on Saturdays, to knock it down, clean it up, get volunteers to do it and haul it off.
I don't know, that'd be nice, but we have the equipment, there's no doubt, we have the equipment.
There's a lot to that.
And I think there would be some individuals that would want the overtime. So how do we pay for the overtime? It's still cheaper than having an enlistment every time.
I think it's tax sales, I think it's in October, posted with Danny, I don't remember exactly what they have. But we do have one set coming up.
We have more of what?
A tax sale coming up.